Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, September 3, 2013. I'd ask everyone to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada." Thank you to the National Film Board of Canada for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. I would move to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Councillor Crokin.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I move the minutes of the city council meeting held August 19, 2013 be adopted.
Thanks very much. Councillor Crokin, did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes?
No.
Seeing nothing, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. I would look for a motion for the adoption of the agenda. Councillor Rice.
I move adoption of the agenda as amended.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. Council members would have the printed amended agenda that had a couple additional items. Any discussion or debate on the agenda? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. This brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity for anyone in the community to come forward and address council on any community-related matter. I understand that we have a young Rotary Youth Exchange student who would like to make a presentation to the city. If you'd like to come forward to the table and introduce yourself, say your name for the record, and please tell us what you have to present to the city. Please be seated and be welcome. Yes.
Hello. My name is Daichiroda. I'm from Japan. I'm an exchange student from our Rotary Club. I'm glad to come here. Thank you.
Welcome.
Then, this is my present of Kryoshi City. This is my city. Then, this is a present for Mayor Bill. This is famous for, like, kimono. This is called Kryoshi Gasri. This is very famous from many years ago. Then, I will give you.
Thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
And did you have a second package there as well? Did you have a second package from your Rotary Club, I think?
Yes. Yeah. Sorry, this is from my present of Rotary Club to Mayor Bill. Thank you.
It's my pleasure to accept that on behalf of the city of Grand Prairie. I'll come around and you can officially present them to me. It certainly is an honor to have visitors, and we certainly appreciate the work that the Rotary Clubs in Grand Prairie do hosting international students each and every year. And actually, thank you very much for your kind gift. We'll certainly explore that and pass it around, circulate it to the rest of the city council. As I said, this is the delegation portion of our agenda, an opportunity for anybody that would like to come forward and address council on any community-related matter. We have this opportunity every city council meeting. I don't see anybody else that's going to take advantage of it this evening, so we'll close the delegation portion and we move to public hearings. Bylaw C-100-199 to amend the land use bylaw, and we'd look for an introduction from -- I'll call the public hearing to order and look for an introduction from administration. Mr. Walton.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bearstow Landers Ketchum, on behalf of the landowner, has submitted a submit.
Excuse me, Mr. Walton. I see Councillor Wong. Councillor Wong.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I have to declare a conflict on this issue. Is this my employer who's representing the landowner?
Great, thanks very much for that catch, Councillor Wong. Thank you. Thanks very much, Mr. Walton.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bearstow Landers Ketchum, on behalf of the landowner, has submitted an application to amend the land use bylaw to change the designation of Lot 2, Block 3, Plan 062-1904, which is 10128, 128th Avenue, from CT Commercial Transition to CA Arterial Commercial. The site is located at the intersection of 101st Street and 128th Avenue in the Northridge Commercial Area. It's approximately .48 hectares in area. 128th Avenue is paved, 101st Street is gravelled. The site is currently vacant. The area to the west contains a two-story commercial building, housing, and number of businesses. The area further to the west across 102nd Street is designated for residential development. The area to the east across 101st contains an auto wrecking business that backs onto 101st, and the properties to the south contain a church and a commercial school. The area to the north is vacant. The site is designated Highway Commercial, a swing site in the Northridge Area Structure Plan. The proposed amendment is consistent with this designation. Swing site designation allows multifamily residential development if market conditions for commercial were unfavorable. The area is not covered by an outline plan, however, the area to the west across 102nd Street is part of the Northridge Outline Plan, and that area is designated for single-family residential development. In March of 2013, an amendment to the Northridge Outline Plan changed the road and lot configuration of that residential area, so the lots adjacent to 102nd Street will now back onto 102nd Street rather than front onto it had previously been envisioned. We believe this will reduce the land used impact, such as noise, visual, and traffic, impacts of commercial development on the east side of 102nd Street on this residential area. The site is currently designated Commercial Transition, the purpose of which is to provide for low-density commercial development bordering residential areas. The CT District is intended to provide a buffer between the residential area and the higher-intensity uses that are allowed in CA. Similar land use bylaw amendments to this area have previously been approved by council. Two properties were rezoned from CT to CA, and those are identified in your report, on the map in your report. And the third was a three-lot rezoning from CT to Direct Control, which provided for CT-type uses fronting onto 102nd Street and CA-type uses in the back of the property fronting onto 101st Street. And I've included the CA and the CT districts in your report for your, I guess, for your review of the types of uses that are allowed in both districts. The site is at the corner of 101st Street and 128th Avenue. 128th Avenue is paved, and 101st Street is gravelled, therefore, the access will be off 128th Avenue. As I indicated previously, the CT District is intended to border residential areas and provide a buffer between the higher-intensity CA Commercial Area to the east and the residential area to the west of 102nd Street. The CT lots in the immediate west of the subject area borders the -- the existing CT lot to the immediate west of the subject property borders the residential and provides that intended buffer. The proposed CA Arterial Commercial Designation is consistent with the Northridge Area Structure Plan and with the designation and use of similar properties in the immediately surrounding area. We did circulate this amendment to surrounding property owners, signed with posted on the site, and the public hearing was advertised in the local paper. We did not receive any concerns or comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walton. So we'd move to the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of the proposed rezoning? I don't see anybody coming forward. Is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition to the proposed rezoning? Again, I don't see anybody coming forward. Council members, do you have any questions for administration before we close the presentation submission portion and the public hearing? I don't see any council members ringing in with questions, so I will close the public hearing and move on to business arising. Councillor Rice.
I move second reading of bylaw C-1100199 to amend the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Rice.
I move third reading of bylaw C-1100199 to amend the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. Any discussion or debate on third reading of this bylaw amendment? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. And eight votes have been cast. That motion carries. I have notified Councillor Wong that conflict of interest is now off. Using our fancy technology, he knew he had an opportunity to come forward. That handles all of our public hearing business, and we had no unfinished business and no reports this evening, so it takes us into committee business. And the 100th Anniversary Committee from August 19, Councillor Rice.
I move that council receive the minutes of the 100th Anniversary Committee meeting of August 19.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions? Seeing nothing, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Rice, anything you want to highlight in that set of minutes?
Just to highlight that we welcome new committee members Shelley Sorenson and Karen McGriskin, that plans are proceeding, and they're firming up very quickly and very nicely.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Rice. We move on to 9.2, Special Community Safety Committee from August 19. Councillor Wong, I believe that was your meeting.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the Special Community Safety Committee meeting held August 19, 2013. And just a reminder to everyone, that was the two tenders that were awarded and ratified at the last council meeting.
Thanks very much, Councillor Wong. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Did anyone note anything out of order? Councillor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I think there were -- we had this meeting here before the last council meeting, and there were more of us in attendance. So I think Councillor Wong and Councillor Crokin were the two members of the committee that were here, but I know I was here, and there were others here as well, so that might be something to check.
Sure, thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. In the also-present section, other members of the council that were in attendance but not voting members of the committee. Yeah, thanks very much, that's why we ask, so we'll make sure that that's amended to reflect those that were actually in attendance. Thank you very much, Councillor Radburn. Any other discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing nothing else, we'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Wong, you already covered the business from that meeting, so we'll move on to 9.3, the Community Growth Committee from August 20. And Councillor Gustafson, was that your set of minutes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council receive the minutes of the Community Growth Committee meeting held August 20, 2013.
Thanks very much, Councillor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Anything out of order in that one? There's a reason I ask. Councillor Radburn can't be the only one that catches these things. Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Gustafson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council accept the revised comparative study of urban and rural development costs as a background study in guiding future land use planning, policy, and servicing standard reviews.
Thanks very much, Councillor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on the motion?
Sure, if I may, Mayor Given. This is a -- we just added on the include some levies and connection fees as well as securities into the document.
Thanks very much, Councillor Gustafson. As council knows, this is a document that compares the development costs between the city and county jurisdictions to ensure that city decision-making is grounded in reality and the expense for our development community. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. I'll wait for the results. That motion carries. Councillor Gustafson, anything else that you want to highlight in that set of minutes?
Sure, Mayor Given. Ms. Jane Caddisharp was there from the Crystal Center, talking about the vendors we have that are in place there and some possible amendments and changes to the service we provide. And that was really all. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councillor Gustafson. We'll move on to the Community Living Committee from August 20. And Councillor Crokin, that was your meeting, wasn't it?
Yes, thanks, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held August 20, 2013.
Thanks very much, Councillor Crokin. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I believe 2.1, I made that motion, not Councillor O'Toole, he doesn't sit on that committee. I made all the motions that day. You were the only one that could.
Thanks very much, Councillor McLean. We'll make sure to accept that change. Any other further discussion or debate? Any other catches in that set of minutes? If nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Crokin, anything else you want to highlight in that set of minutes?
Yes, thanks, Mayor Given. There was a couple of delegations. Ms. Beverly Sylvester had made a -- she was expressing some concerns with the bylaw on the cemetery, and it was directed to administration to come back with a solution and bring those results right to Mrs. Sylvester. And I'm also happy to announce that Ms. Maureen Curry of the Grand Prairie Public Library gave us quite a lengthy report, and the membership is up 17%. So that's a really good growth for the 75th year anniversary of the public library. That's it, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Councillor Crokin. I see maybe a question from Councillor McLean. Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. To Councillor Crokin, that was with Beverly. That was the one where they took basically the crosses from the graves site and put them over by a garage. So is that what you're indicating on that one there?
Mayor Given, that wasn't the one that was in question. It was in the public area where the patrons are buried on behalf of the public citizens of Grand Prairie, and there was some ornaments broken there, and that's what the discussion was. It wasn't about the crosses. The crosses was another issue.
Yeah, but she did bring up about 10 or 20 crosses being taken off of grave sites.
It might have been getting out just for more holy water or something, I don't know.
Then put back.
Yes.
Okay.
That was everything, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Councillor Crokin. Councillor Rice.
To Councillor Crokin, I know not long ago we amended the cemetery rule so people couldn't have stuff because it was becoming onerous for the staff to mow around them, and there was quite a bit of concern with people. And so this one is, are they allowed to have stuff on the cement pad? I think the question was. So are they going to be looking at all the rule changes and how people have adapted to them?
I believe, Mayor Given, I believe so. Councillor Rice, I won't be able to answer for administration, but yes, the 12, is it 1266? Yeah. Bylaw C-1266 will be looked at, but it has been amended to, as you say, clean up. When people put down some things and they're not appropriate there, well, they are appropriate to them, but they aren't to the cemetery, they blow away, and then it piles up, and it just, it's a place that you want to go and remember your loved ones, not see a bunch of stuff piled up.
Any further discussion or debate? Questions or comments? Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. And I know, because I can remember bylaw C-1266, and there was a bunch of stuff related to charging more for lots, and a lot of it was ornaments, but nothing was brought to council about removing grave markers. And there was 10 or 20 grave markers, head parts, old wooden ones that said, okay, Susie or whoever was buried there, and that's concerning me. So I'm hoping that really comes back to the committee quicker than normal. Thank you, Councillor Crokin.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion or debate on the motion, then we'll move on to the Corporate Services Committee from August 27, 2013. Councillor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council receive the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee meeting held August 27, 2013.
Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Did anyone note anything out of order on Councillor Radburn's set of minutes? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So I would move that council authorize the city of Grand Prairie to participate in an application for the collaborating on technologies for municipal service delivery project under the regional collaboration component of the Alberta Municipal Affairs Regional Collaboration Program, and further that the city, if participant agrees to abide by the terms of the conditional grant agreement governing the purpose and use of the grant funds. This is simpler. This is similar to the benchmarking regional collaboration project that we're involved in as well. This is really about a number of municipalities in the province, regionally and more provincially, accessing some monies to hire consultants, to basically touch base with each of these municipalities, and talk about things such as volume purchasing, centrally hosted services, shared processes and learning, training, and shared development opportunities such as mobile apps, et cetera. So it's a way of learning and growing from each other, with each other and from each other, and are there some efficiencies that can be garnered through working together? So this is what the motion is about. There are, I think Karen talked about 19 or 20, Ms. Valley's looking at this, so this is the first step, establishing by motion who would be the partners and then applying for the grant. The actual work will probably not happen until early in 2014, but the committee really felt this was a way to work together and see how we can learn and help one another. Maybe we can become more efficient and more effective. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council approve that properties subject to 2012 tax recovery notification as per the attached list be offered for sale by public auction. Two, that the auction be held in the first floor North Conference Room at City Hall on Friday, November 29, 2013, at 9:00 a.m. And three, that the reserve bids for the 2013 tax sale be set as per the attached Appendix C. This is an annual process that the city goes through in terms of dealing with those properties that haven't paid their taxes, and it has been, in the past, quite effective. Market value, not many get, well, some, a few get to sale. Oh, no, not very many. Usually people, this process really encourages people to pay up. And in terms of people looking for a deal, there's assessed values listed, so the bids can't be any less than the assessed value. So anyway, the other thing of note, point of note would be that I think there's were 35 properties this year, which is a typical year. Last year, we had close to 90, so we're back more to normal. But this is an annual process that works well for the city. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing nobody ringing in, Councillor O'Toole.
I just want to comment that, thanks, Mayor Given, by the way, I just want to comment that the banks usually come forth and pay the bills, so not usually anything goes up for tax sale.
Exactly. Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Any further discussion or debate? Questions? Comments? Seeing nothing, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council award tender T-60-547-13 to Joe Johnson Equipment Inc. in the amount of $286,207 excluding GST. This was the only bid. It is a purchase of a new replacement sewer cleaner with hydro excavation capabilities. The tendered amount was within budget. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on this motion? Seeing nothing, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Radburn, you had a couple other pieces of business still.
Right on, thank you. I would move council award tender T-55-547-13 to Brant Tractor Limited in the amount of $1,189,000 excluding GST, and further direct administration to limit the contract to a three-year term ending in 2015.
Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. Discussion or debate on the motion? Councillor Rice.
Purchase, I don't understand the three years. If it's a purchase of heavy equipment, I don't get the three years.
So really, Helen, is that this will be our supplier? There is seven units, at least, seven different types of equipment, maybe even a few more units that we're going to purchase over a three-year period that will be, that Brant Equipment will be the supplier for.
For a total cost. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Radburn, Councillor Crokin.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Mayor Given. I just want a little clarification. Is it tender T-55457 or T-55547? It's 547? There's just a typo there. I just didn't know which one is which.
Where's the typo?
So we're on item 9.5 point, well, in our printed copy, 9.5.4, and the tender is T-55-457. I see in the heading, it's backwards from the motion, so I'm going to refer to our electronic agenda, which had it as 457. I want to actually pause that error there as well.
Oh, all right. We could be buying --
So the motion is --
Maybe we can just check the committee minutes.
The minutes, it says the 55547-13.
547, yeah. Okay.
So who's the authority on the number of the tender?
Not me.
Obviously not me either.
So we will go with the 55, because the previous one was the 547. The award of the street, sorry, excuse me, of the sewer cleaner was 547?
It's also T-60.
Yeah.
Versus T-55.
So what do we have from the set of minutes, Councillor Radburn?
Both, in terms of the minutes, both the heading of the item and the motion Both, in terms of the minutes, both the heading of the item and the motion says T dash five-five-five-four-seven thirteen.
Okay. Thank you very much.
It was in here, too.
Thank you for that clarity. The reading is obviously correct. So, we'll just make sure that that motion at council here reflects that correct tender number. Thanks, Counselor Crokin. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I believe might be question related, Ken on this. I know they sign a contract at this and they get maybe seven or eight new pieces of equipment every three years or four years, and there's a service come with that, but some of that equipment's got to be still good after three years, and maybe parks might need one or two, and, you know, so is it mostly leased, or do we actually own majority of it after the three-year deal, and we can keep some around to actually maintain other areas?
Mr. Anderson.
We actually do own the equipment, and we move it to other departments if it's deemed fit for it. Otherwise, it goes to auction.
Thank you for that, sir, because three years, to me, is still pretty new on some of that equipment. Thanks, Ken.
Any Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, the equipment isn't three years old when we get rid of it. It, we have a cycle, so that equipment could be ten or twelve years old, but we know that every three years, we get rid of about seven pieces of equipment, so it's at least ten years old.
And additionally, if I understand administrations' practice, the Fleet Department looks at the point at which we can get the best value at auction, essentially before it's miled out and we get zero, so they look to ensure that they keep us at a upgrade cycle where we have functional equipment, but also at a point where we can dispose of the equipment and still get decent value in return. Any further discussion or debate?
That's why I pressed. Thank you, Mayor Given. Ken, ten years, I found, I remember Frank was here, he was saying it was maybe three to five years, and they would turn them over and they would think that would monetize, I mean, get ten years out of that when I first came on council.
Mr. Anderson.
Well, it depends on the type of equipment. Some types of equipment wear out quicker than others, so they max out as much as they can. Sometimes they do overhauls of the units as well. It's when they're on their last legs that they really go out to auction.
Okay, thank you. Thanks very much. Any further discussion or debate on this tender? Seeing no one else ringing in the queue, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Radburn, I think you have one last piece of business.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council approve policy three-one-four, budget creation as attached. This is a part of our fiscal sustainability model. We've passed over the past couple of years. Policy is dealing with municipal revenues, long-term debt management, expenditure control, reserves, and now we're doing budget creation. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion or on the policy? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Radburn, anything else that you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes, or did we cover all the business?
Pretty well, just a couple that we didn't, and they were both service review updates, and we received reports on the service review of the Facilities Department and another one of the Finance Department. And the reports kind of indicated some of the actions, some of the changes that have been made resulting from those reviews, and feedback from staff and administration and leadership is that they are helping improve our service. Sometimes they're making us more efficient, sometimes they're making us more effective, but generally a positive feedback from, from looking at the recommendations from the reviews. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. I believe that concludes all of our committee business. We had no items of correspondence today. We did have one delegation, though, so I wondered if we could have a motion to receive the delegation's presentation for information. Counselor Monroe.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'll move that we receive the delegation's presentation for information, and just one question. Mayor Given, were you not part of that program at one point?
Was. You wrote a youth exchange student way back in nineteen ninety-three, ninety-four. Thanks for mentioning it, on the twentieth year anniversary. Yeah, thanks very much for that motion, Counselor Monroe. Certainly a program that is close to my heart. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. We had no notice of motion, and that would take us to council member reports, and we'd start with Alberta Urban Municipalities Association. Counselor Rice.
Planning for the AUMA convention is underway. The convention will be the third week in November this year, as it always is in election year, to allow new councillors an opportunity to attend, and they'll be very heavy on the educational session, so a real opportunity for new councillors to get in tune with what's happening.
Counselor Rice, I received an invitation today to participate in a forum, and so I'm not sure if it's bad voodoo to respond to these kind of things for things after the election, but I see that at the AUMA convention, there's going to be a discussion panel on visioning future governance, so I certainly appreciate the fact that that's a topic that AUMA is taking on and putting front and center with all the new councils across the province, and I certainly appreciate being invited to be a part of that panel. Just pass that on to the organizers. Okay, Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance, Counselor Wong.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. On August twenty-second, the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance held a meeting here in Grand Prairie at Aquaterra's landfill location. The society was approved for the provincial grant of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to produce a state-of-the-watershed report, and that's going to be set up to be completed for next spring. The board is doing a bunch of the initial work to get things going in anticipation of receiving that grant. They are setting up the terms of reference for that report and also narrowing down a list of potential health indicators for the Peace River. We continue to gather information as well. There was a presentation on the Site-C Dam in B.C. from a representative from Alberta Environment and Sustainable Resource Development. I just wanted to, first of all, welcome all the new board members that have stepped up. There were, there was quite a few after the AGM, and they've just had their first meeting with us. I also wanted to welcome Michelle Gardner, who is now accompanying me on the last few meetings, to provide continuity for the next council. The next councillor who steps into this will be knee-deep or neck-deep in reports, however you want to look at it. There is a ton of technical information to wade through, and Michelle will be an excellent resource for that. She's already got herself caught up to speed, so, yeah, that's, that's the short part of it.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong, and thanks for your work on that committee representing the city. Peace Library System, Counselor Crokin.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Couple of things noteworthy. Our chairman, Ms. Veronica Blaska, always gets a letter from the director of Alberta Libraries, and they say they directly deposited into your account seven hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. Of course, we always fib with her, that's really supposed to be for Peace Library operating and service grant, but that's actually where it went. But one of the other things I wanted to report on is a shining star in Ottawa, Mr. Merv Tweed, he's an MP from Brandon Sures. He put forward a private members bill, C three-twenty-one, and it got royal assent. What that was all about was to freeze the amount of sending a book anywhere to ninety-three cents return for a kilo for a book. I mean, it makes, the savings is unbelievable. There's twenty-two-hundred libraries actively using that book rate, and over a million Canadians benefiting from it, actually, so. Once again, thanks to Merv Tweed, who's taken the lead and championed access to library materials of fundamental value and right for Canadians, and then he left the government, so kudos to him. He did a very good job. That's it. That was in Hith, by the way.
Thanks, thanks very much, Counselor Crokin.
The great town of Hith.
Counselor O'Toole, you have South Peace Regional Archives, I believe.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. We didn't have a meeting yet as, over the summer, but I've got a couple of comments. Two people that have made a big impact to the South Peace Archives passed away this summer. A longtime supporter, Beth Sheehan, passed away August twenty-third. Beth not only loved history but took great care of it. She preserved the records created by her grandparents, Paul and Elizabeth Flint, who arrived in the Beaver Lodge area in nineteen oh nine, and the interviews of early settlers done by her mother, Frances Flint. When she began her own documentation through photography, which she loved, Beth recorded date, place, events, and people on each photograph. This included a project to photograph every street and major building in Grand Prairie for the twenty-fifth anniversary of the city in nineteen eighty-three. Her meticulous documentation of the peace country through history photographs will be a great resource for years to come. The other lady that is also a longtime Archives volunteer is Betty Welter. She passed away July twelfth, two thousand thirteen. Betty was one of the original famous five ladies who became involved with the SPRA soon after it was established in two thousand. One of the first tasks was assisting with the processing of the county school collection, but she was willing to do and did everything from cooking for the AGM luncheons to helping us put out the newsletter. Betty was a phenomenal memory and loved to recount stories from her childhood. She was working on her memory of the Morrison's General Store on page fifteen, which was finished and edited by her daughter, Margaret Skelly, and lay in the hospital bed. So, if you happen to be part of the South Peace Regional Archives or have been down to the museum, this is the booklet that comes out quarterly. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. And Counselor O'Toole, we'll start council roundtable with you as well.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor Given. On the nineteenth, I attended the Westgate, the Westgate Building area over there and the Home Sense grand opening, had their grand opening for the Grand Prairie area. I was attended by many councillors and many staff, and when we got there early in the morning, at about eight o'clock, there was probably a hundred and fifty people waiting for the doors to open, and very successful. On the twentieth, I attended the Philip J. Currie Dinosaur Museum Building Committee, and I'd like to tell you that everything is on cue. Timing is working out good. The weather's been holding out, and we are not delayed at all. On the twenty-first, I attended the Archie Harvey Golf Tournament put on by the RCMP here in town, and the money that's raised in this tournament goes towards education through the Grand Prairie Regional College. On the twenty-second, I attended my first rugby game. It was too bad, the Centaurs lost, but it was quite an interesting sport, and they don't use equipment, and they were hitting pretty hard. Earlier in the day, I attended the East Link Center parking lot party, and I spent some time in the dunk tank, and you would think that my family come out to get me wet, which they did. I know they spent a lot of my money, and I, everybody that threw a ball that paid sunk me, and I'm awful wet, and I got a few battle scars. On the twenty-seventh, we had the Disabled Transport Society meeting, and Duncan Rosie has been the manager of the DTS for a number of years. He took the job when the DTS was in pretty rough shape, wedding, scheduling, staffing, and anyhow, he has resigned his position, but he's moving on to the Grand Prairie Transit Department and working out with the new transition that the transit system is going through right now. So, at the point in time, we are looking for a new DTS manager. On the twenty-eighth, I attended the Grand Prairie Wildfire Tanker Base grand opening. I had to leave a little early, but it looked like it was going to be well-attended. We had a number of aircraft that were purchased by the province show up in attendance. On the twenty-ninth, I attended the Canadian Home Builders Chamber Mixer, and that was very well-attended. In fact, if it wasn't for the parking lot outside, I don't think we could have all got in the building. And on the thirtieth, I attended the grand opening, or tender opening here at City Hall, and I just want to congratulate the Grand Prairie Cricket Club and the Grand Prairie Dinosaur, which is dinosaurs, which are the team that won the inaugural Cricket Cup, so, thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Very quickly, August twentieth, I also attended the Home Sense opening and ribbon cutting and welcomed them to our community. Twenty-third, Grand Spirit Foundation Management Committee meeting, and then a tender opening in the afternoon. I also attended the East Link Parking Lot Party. No, I did not sit on the dunk tank. I actually was in front of the dunk tank, trying to get my grandson to dunk, Mayor Given and Counselor O'Toole. I attended the Grand Prairie Wildfire Air Tanker Base grand opening as well, and the Chamber Mixer, as noted by Counselor O'Toole. And I also attended, for about an hour and a half, on the thirty-first, the multicultural celebration, was hosted by the Grand Prairie Centre for Newcomers and, and Volunteers, so I want to thank them for putting that together. Great day, and quite a few people came down, and I think it was an event that was excellent. And today, I attended a council committee, the whole meeting at noon. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. As well, I attended on August twentieth, the grand opening of the Home Sense. I was actually the first customer to buy some, some stuff from there. I ended up buying some extra stuff that I didn't realize was in the basket. That's all okay, and so that was good, and I believe what Counselor O'Toole was saying about a hundred and fifty customers before they opened the door, I think it might have been two hundred and fifty, because they were within a half an hour where we were in there before they did ribbon cutting, it sure grew out there, and they were giving out Tim Hortons, and I went out to get some, and it was all gone. So, then on August twenty-third, I also attended a Customer Appreciation Day at BMO Bank, and I don't know why they don't have two in the city, but they're sure busy there, and congrats to the BMO, and they're very, very happy in that area that they're going to have a left-hand turning signal to actually get in and out. On August twenty-sixth, I had my quarterly meeting with Greg. I look forward to these meetings. It's something Greg has brought up about having these meetings. He's a very good city manager, and this is probably my last meeting I had with him to do this and for this council, and I believe I had the longest list this time, and, and it was quite fun, and Greg works really hard, and he takes this from council, and he works with it, and he does it very well, so I appreciate that with Greg, and thank you. August twenty-eighth, I was also open Health and Mississippi Park for, one of our councillors' favorite hangout place, A and W on Hundred Street there, it's one of his favorite hangouts, one of them in the morning. They're going to be doing the service road, rebuilding it. So, when you go into Superstore on both sides there, they're going to be doing up so far to the Ave, and then on the other side, they're actually going to be digging the road up, rebuilding it, curbs, pavement, so there's going to be some confusion there for the next month, but this road was built thirty-five years ago, and it's time, so moving on, I'm glad to see it, and it'll probably make the business even stronger. And as well, today's September third, I attended the Laser Centre Building Planning Committee as a whole. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Counselor Wong.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. Just quickly, I attended the Home Sense ribbon cutting on the twentieth and the Chamber Mixer at the Canadian Home Builders Association. I was able to meet a bunch of the new candidates for the election coming up this October. I just wanted to say that it takes a lot of guts for someone to put in their name, and I really think that they're going to be putting in a lot of hard work this fall, and I just wanted to congratulate them on that. I also want to congratulate my fellow councillors and the mayor for, for stepping up and putting, putting their names for it. I hope everyone has announced already for me to say that. Everyone from Counselor Rice on. You guys have done fantastic work, and it's great to see that the city is going to be run by some really good people. Thank you.
It's very nice of you to say, from Quitter's Corner over there.
Sorry, guys. Counselor Gustafson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Well, like, I didn't go to the Home Sense opening, and my wife's kind of mad at me about that, but I'm sure she'll make up for it. Been really busy enjoying the summer, and spent a few, about an hour with City Manager Greg Scherbak last week in regards to my last meeting with City Manager Scherbak, so, and that's, that's all I've been doing, counting down the days. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Counselor Rice? Councilor Rice?
I attended the air tanker base reopening. Was very impressed with the CT-two-fifteen Ts that have all been retrofitted. I was impressed to find that there's four of them in the province, and there's various bases, and they move the planes around in proximity to where the greatest wildfire danger is. So I thought that was a very efficient use of resources as opposed to duplication of resources. I attended the Canadian Home Builders Association Chamber Mixer. Again, I said, one of the most popular that they've had to date, and it was a beautiful night. I'd like, too, with council's indulgence, I want to express condolences to the family of Sam Drater, who passed away, and I, I'd say with council's indulgence, I'd like to share a couple of Sam's stories. Sam, when he was on council, brought a very wry sense of humor and common sense folksy approach to problems that left, I think, some legacies in the city. And a couple of my favorite stories, where there was an alderman who, at one point, had made it his mission, he was going to find a member of council guilty of conflict of interest if it was the last thing he did. And he was accusing an alderman of being in a conflict of interest, and the alderman was angry, and tempers were rising. It got pretty hot. And Sam said, "Well, if we're talking conflict of interest, then I guess I better admit that I am part-owner of one of the largest businesses downtown." And everyone stopped and froze and looked at him, and he said, "No, no, it's quite true. I have shares in the co-op." Which caused the whole, and then it just broke the tension. And my other one was, at one point, we were talking about raising the fines for dogs running at large. People felt, you know, very passionate, pro and con. Sam said, "Well, you know, the problem is, if that's your dog running down the road, you can't imagine who would be afraid of good old Rover. Of course, if you're the guy he's running towards, you feel differently." So it was always entertaining with Sam on council, and Sam was a fierce fighter. When Sam believed in something, and I know one of the boards Sam was on, he took exception to one of their policies, and boy, he was fierce in terms of standing up for the need to amend that policy. He was an excellent alderman, an excellent citizen in Grand Prairie.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Councilor Krogan?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I also attended the grand opening of Home Sense. There was a real special on scissors, and only the first customer could buy them, and I think that's been announced already. On the twenty-first, I had a lengthy dinner meeting with City Manager Greg Scherbak. He said, "I've had the shortest list and the better ideas," he said, so he's looking forward to a meeting with me this fall. He's not here. On the twenty-third, I represented council in the Archie Harvey Tournament. On the twenty-fourth, I attended in Hythe, Village of Hythe, the Executive Library Board meeting. And on the twenty-sixth, I attended at Friends of the Grand Spirit Meeting at Pioneer Lodge. I'm one of the members at large, and just to let you know, they've raised over, we've raised over fifty-two thousand dollars. It goes back to the lodges, and that includes Beaver Lodge, Spirit River. And it was, the fifty-two thousand dollars is credited to Wendy Doucette. Is, she's a great organizer, and you can never say no to her when it comes to selling tickets or grad sales or seniors' dinner, which is on October the nineteenth. So that's everything.
Thanks very much, Councilor Krogan. Councilor Monroe?
Thanks very much, Mayor Given. On the twenty-eighth, I also attended the GP Wildfire Management Base and had the opportunity to tour a couple of the planes, and was quite amazed at how these planes can perform. If memory serves me correctly, I think they hold about twelve thousand pounds, or pardon me, twelve thousand kilos, which is, twelve hundred kilos, which is close to twelve thousand liters of water and retardant. And it only takes ten seconds to fill one of these planes up when they're skimming across the, across the water. So it was, it was quite unique. On the twenty-ninth, I attended the Chamber Mixer, and once again, thanks to the Home Builders Association for hosting that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Monroe. On Tuesday, the twentieth, I also attended the Home Sense ribbon cutting. Great to see another national store see the value and the opportunity in the Grand Prairie market. We welcome them. Later that day, I had the opportunity to meet with Deputy Premier Thomas Lecasek along with other members from other municipalities across the region. The main focus of the conversation was, of course, on his portfolio as Minister of Advanced Education and Enterprise. The education portion of the discussion obviously focused on the importance of GPRC to our region and to our city. And around advanced education, there were a number of questions and lots of discussion around the Temporary Foreign Worker Program, which is also obviously very important to our local economy. After that meeting, I had an opportunity to tour the deputy premier around the Grand Prairie Gallery. He was pretty impressed and very impressed to know that it's Alberta's second-largest gallery after the Edmonton Art Gallery. And he was snapping pictures left and right as we went through the buildings. That was great to see. And then I did have an opportunity to take him down to the Eastlink Centre. He was also education minister for a period of time, and so the construction of the public high school was something we wanted to show him, and then also show him that the Grand Prairie region is very open to partnerships that might not be considered traditional in other communities. And the Eastlink Centre and the Community Knowledge Camp are certainly evidence of that. On Wednesday, the twenty-first, I had the opportunity to participate in the ribbon cutting for the new home hardware on the west side. This is a conversion from a woodland timber mart to a home hardware. Great to see the company making investment in our region. The owner is actually the owner of both home hardware's in Grand Prairie, and they've had a massive expansion recently, so great to see them investing in our region. Thursday and Friday of that week, I was in Wataasquin for the Midsize City Mayor's meeting. Topics of discussion ranged from the flooding in central Alberta to ambulance dispatch to Beaver Control policies in communities. And I also wanted to note, too, if council members aren't aware, this group was about seven municipalities. To start off with, the cities, you had to be a city other than Edmonton and Calgary to be a member. Recently, we changed our practice to allow towns of, as long as you have a population of over fifteen thousand. There are some cities that are actually smaller than that fifteen thousand mark, and there are some towns that are larger. We recognize that there are certainly common concerns once you hit a certain population threshold, and we also see that there's a significant benefit in terms of strength in numbers when it comes to lobbying the provincial government. I think coming forward, we're going to see the organization take some steps to address a concern with the provincial government around centralizing ambulance dispatch at the provincial level. And certainly, City of Grand Prairie, and with our experience in dispatch, has a fairly major stake in that issue. On Saturday, the twenty-fourth, I was back in Grand Prairie to participate in the Eastlink Centre Parking Lot Party. It was great to be in the dunk tank, great to go after Councilor O'Toole. It was nice of you to warm up the water. I don't want to ask how you did that. On Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, I was also at the Grand Prairie Wildfire Management Air Tanker Base, and it was great to see, again, the provincial government making this investment. I understand it was a project that was a long time coming, but it was great to see the pride of the crews in the base and in the air equipment. On Thursday, the twenty-ninth, I was also at the Chamber Mixer at the Grand Prairie Home Builders Association. And on the thirty-first, Saturday, the thirty-first, I was at the multicultural celebration in Musquesee Park. That was hosted by the Grand Prairie Centre for Newcomers. Certainly want to thank them for their efforts in organizing that and for recognizing all the cultures and the diversity in our community. And then this morning, I was back to school. I headed back to school at St. Pat's. AMA was launching a reminder of their school patroller program. So again, the Grand Prairie Storm participated, and the Storm mascot was there to remind parents and students in the public that kids are back in school, that keep an eye out for the patrollers that are participating and helping protect their classmates. And I had no other items to report. So if that is everything, then we will adjourn our meeting. Thank you very much.